Dr. Pruitt, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good to see you.
This was from Ashley.
I'm here with Susan, but I will introduce you to Kathleen over there.
Today, yeah, today. Yes, sir.
Hello.
Whatever it is.
Whatever it is.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We are gathered here today for the February 24th workshop. Time is 1:01 PM. And it's my understanding that there have been no questions regarding the regular agenda for tomorrow submitted by board members. So then at this time, we will move right along and begin with our attainable housing presentation. And at this time, I'll send it, I'll turn it over to Dr. Pruitt. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher, may I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Giddens.
Okay, so if we didn't send any questions, we can't discuss anything on the agenda? That's okay. I mean, if that's what is discussed.
Well, it was my understanding that the questions had to be submitted ahead of time so staff could be prepared to respond.
Okay.
So we'll move right into attainable housing, and then if you have questions at the end, we'll be happy to entertain them. Thank you.
Great, thank you, board members. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Eba, and she's going to get us started.
Good afternoon, board.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We are here today to discuss a project that Angela's been working on for over two years, so I think she's very excited to finally bring this to a point that we can have a discussion. We are here with our real estate consultant, Dan Oberski, who is going to walk through a process that staff has come up with over the last couple of months by which we would develop a scope of work to put out to the public at the end of the scoping process, probably three to four months, a request for organizations to provide us with concepts to move forward with some attainable housing alternatives. And Dan is going to walk through a quick presentation with us, and then if there's further questions, we're happy to answer them.
Dan Oberski, for the record. This first page is just an introduction of the conversation. This is the first step towards a scoping program that'll allow us to understand how to consider which properties to consider and where we go from that. We're very much engaged in the idea of providing housing for staffing, for retention, and for the purpose of the school district. The second page just references in your 2030 plan, some of the key items that we highlighted as being integral and incorporated in what we're planning on doing with regards to the housing and how it might assist with attracting, retaining, and keeping consistency with your education plan and supporting your students and the families associated to your students. This shows, well, it doesn't quite show everything that's on that slide there, but this is back referencing to the 2030 plan. The bottom left, you see a partial imagery, and one of the three circles in the plan references workforce success. We think that this and should be able to be a strong way to assist the school in helping with workforce success for your teachers and staffing. The site identification is the first phase. We would be working with staff to identify which of the school sites that have been purchased and are owned by the school may not be needed in the future for schools. So the last thing that we want to do is to neglect the primary purpose for the school board, which is providing schools and education for students through the traditional format of schools. So working through the currently owned assets to identify which ones may fit and which ones will not be needed for future schools. So one of the considerations has to do with size. If we have prototypes that no longer fit on the sites, or our prototypes can fit with substantially excess land for, on those sites. So we reference potential, partial portions of land or the entire sites that may vary in size. These are, this is just imagery that shows the vacant land that we currently own and is intended to be a component of how we consider. So in working with staff to identify certain school areas that may have a harder time retaining or recruiting teachers or staff, and as a component of how we determine where to and what parcels of land might be provided out to the market for offers or for presentations of offers. So we'll measure internal and external needs. We have had, over the last two years, many conversations with several other organizations as well that have staffing needs that are in a strong relationship with the school board to make sure that we can get as much benefit to the community as possible. That covers most of these. The process proceeding forward is to determine the preferences and priorities, so making sure that we understand what is most important to the school district, the teachers, and the staff, working through and developing a list of potential for-profit, nonprofit, or government-related developers. So making sure that we have a broad range of prospects to get the most creative and most impactful sites or partners to determine what options could proceed for housing for teachers. And the last item on here is analyze proposals. So the scope would, we developed the scope to provide a mechanism for us to determine which proposals would be most effective for accomplishing the needs of the school district. Next couple steps are packaging the sites. So once we've gone through the process of working with the staff to identify which sites may qualify as something that we could present to the market for offers, then we would package those sites, including whatever information, due diligence, or data that we have on those sites, so that whoever the prospective bidders or developers would be, would have enough data to make a comprehensive offer. Then we would create an offering memorandum, though, and that's referenced there for each of those sites. Then we'd market the offering memorandums. So we would use primarily typical format for marketing the properties and then seeking offers on those properties through our offering memorandums and sales to the market. The last slide just provides an estimated timeline, is we believe that we could take the next zero to 45 days to draft the OM and data for a draft presentation for staff to review, make comments on. At that point, we know that our review and knowledge and daily interaction with attainable housing, teacher housing, affordable housing, the needs, the costs, the expenses, it's our everyday language, and it's not necessarily the board's everyday conversation. And so our intent is during that 45 days, we'll also develop the opportunity for the following 45 days for workshops for board, staff, or others, so that we could answer a lot of the questions as to why is there issues? Why, why can't we find affordable housing? Why haven't these been provided? What are the, what's making our market so difficult to provide housing to our teachers and staff? At 90 days, our goal is to have a completion of the OM. So that's just the marketing materials for the parcel or parcels of land that we might be considering taking to market. That would be completed by then. The estimated, I apologize for a typo, I missed this, 120 to 180 days following that time period would be the expected exposure to the market to make sure that we get the largest amount of eyes on the opportunity, so that we could see what creative options might be presented to us. And then our goal would be by fourth quarter of 2020, to have selected potential individuals or developers that could be able to provide the housing for us.
So again, this, this process that we're going to go through is just to develop a scoping effort. It is not the actual, the actual product. It is, it is the way that we will evaluate potential solutions. It will be the way that we will market potential to the market, what we're looking for, and it's a way for us to then judge the resulting submissions and the criteria by which we will determine and select which ones we would move for. Our goal is to have an array of projects, up to three of them, of different sizes, different scopes, different locations in the county, so that we can make this then replicatable to other projects down the road. So, but this does not bind us to actually pursuing any of these. If we determine through this process that this is not an avenue we want to pursue further, if we don't get the right of right proposals that we're looking for, we are in no way bound to select one or any of them to pursue further. It is just a way for us to look at these issues, for us to have a better discussion, as Dan said, for us to have a discussion with the board about kind of the, the, the housing consideration and market considerations around this issue that help us understand why it is so difficult for our teachers and staff to find attainable housing, and then to seek out opportunities for us to work with partners in, in the other healthcare industries, other educational industries to help address this issue further. So at that, if there are any questions about what we're asking, we're happy to entertain those answers.
Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, I have a couple questions. First of all, how many staff hours have been spent working on this process to date?
I'm going to have to ask Ms. Pruitt to help me with that, because I...
I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, I, I would like to know for, if you can do some research and get back to me, how many staff hours have already been spent, the number of people that have been working on this, and at what cost? Okay, that's, that's the first thing. The second thing is, I want to know to date, what partnerships have emerged with other government agencies that have similar problems? The first one that comes to mind, if there are any professionals that get paid less than teachers, it's the child protective services, the, this, our social workers in this area. It's probably no surprise, from the way I'm, I'm forming my questions, that I am not a fan of this. I don't think, and I know we're working through the process, but this has come up before, I don't see any reason why a school district needs to, on their own, be landlords. I think this is something that we need to be, and are we in partnership with, like, the county commissioners? This is not just a Lee County, our professional teachers. This is overall with a lot of professionals in this county. And secondly, I might add, I would much prefer our teachers get a living wage than to try to put them in what will turn out to be subsidized housing.
Ms. Vaughn, I appreciate all your comments and concerns. We're actively having conversations with those that work within Lee Health, the university, many of the other providers.
So which, can you tell me which groups exactly? So Lee Health is becoming a partner?
No, we, we are not proposing any partnerships right this second. I want to be very clear. Part of the scoping and part of our task is to clarify who can be potential partners in this. And, and the school board to date has not referenced the desire or need to be a developer, development partner, or landlord.
It's true.
The intent here is to go to market and identify those that bring that expertise to the table, who can bring some of those services, giftings and talents, as well as those others that can assist and provide support, so that the school board does not take all of the burden of this by any stretch of the imagination. This is supportive in nature to teachers and staff and any other organizations that might be considered. But this is, this is a gathering. The intent is, with, with this is, we reference, is to determine multiple different sizes of properties, multiple different types of developers, and to determine, are any of those an option? Not to state that they are an option, or that we are committing to be partners, or developers, or landlords. I think everybody here, including all of the staff that I've spoken to, knows what you do well and what your task to do, which is to educate and inform students, and they honor that greatly. But they also see the, the limitations that we have in recruiting and bringing and supplying consistency of services to the, the school because of limitation of housing. Unfortunately, we don't have just an open market that has unlimited supply. That supply is bought by, by the world that wants to come and live in Florida. So this is intended to assist and protect your school district.
Thank you.
Okay, and I just, I just want to reiterate, I would love to see, not would love, I'm requesting, how many staff members have been working on this, for exactly how long, and at what cost? Because at this point, I would have thought that we would have identified some, some partners on this, and again, I'm going to reiterate, I don't want anybody to think I'm not supportive of our teachers and staff. I am, but I choose to support them through raises and not subsidized housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan, did you have your hand up first? No, no, okay, Ms. Giddens.
Thank you. Okay, in, in my mind, this project, I understand that we need to be able to attract and keep teachers and staff, and that housing is an issue. But I also see it as, as we present them the package, you know, come and, and work in the Lee County School District, and here are some possible, possible things that you can do. And one of those things is, here are some possibilities for homeownership, if that is what you're interested in. In other, to me, it's the teacher, the employee, the whoever, needs to make that decision for themselves. And listening to this, it's like we're becoming the middle man, when all we really need to do is to say, here is program A, B, and C. You can look at it. If we vet those companies, then we are in the middle. Because if something goes wrong with one of those companies, then, well, the board or the district said that these were good. I don't think we need to be in the business of saying and rating or ranking those businesses. I know we don't want to see anything happen, or issues, you know, with housing or whatever. But there are companies out there right now that are already doing this. I spoke to a gentleman at a meeting the other day that said, yes, I got, I just got another two houses for some of your staff. I just don't understand why we have to spend the time and energy to vet something that is, in the end, going to be ultimately an individual decision by an employee and an adult that moves to this area. That's, that's my concern, why we are spending the time to vet, because we will be in the middle of it if anything happens with one of those groups that we vetted.
The intent here is to vet the priorities of the school district, not vet the viability directly of the developer. And so we're not, we're not making claims to this developer has performed and has no, no issues on their houses. We've never, we wouldn't put forward something to say that these are getting our stamp. At some point, we have to verify whether or not they can provide housing that can be attainable by our teachers. And can they perform on provide, like, bringing that from dirt to housing? So...
So can you define the word partnership as it relates to these companies, our employees, and, and the board or the district as an entity?
Intentionally be to the, whatever the benefits are. So the benefits is the only component that we would be partnered. The expectation is, this would have to be a transferred asset with requirements on performance based off of what they committed to doing. And so if they were unable to perform, that could be undone. But the benefits is the only component that I would call partners. I don't anticipate that we're going to have a legal format to actually be partners in development. The only partnership we have is, hey, the, these are some of the options that this, the individuals, that our teachers can choose.
And, and that's why I'm saying, that's why I basically agree with what Ms. Vaughn was saying, that we're spending a lot of time to do something that is basically giving a new potential employee a list of possibilities for housing.
So the one, the one thing that does put us, as, have a stake in this project, is that we, under, under the scope that we're looking at, the tangible asset that is in our control is our land. So that is the part where we would be looking for potential developers or other groups to, to come in and provide for attainable housing using the land that we acquired for the purposes of educational purposes.
So we would maintain, we would still have the land, they would just come in and facilitate building the houses on that land?
Not necessarily, but, but as, the, the reason that we would be identifying these properties for this purpose is because we believe that they are in locations and of the size that would make them viable alternatives for a developer. So we haven't talked about what our long-term commitment to it is. I'm just saying that the reason that we would have a stake in this project and the reason that we have asked TCG to develop this project, and to be clear, this, most of the staff time involved in this is, is, is reviewing their work. They are doing the majority of the work, and they are doing it as part of their ongoing contract negotiation commitments to us. So this is something that, the, the reason that we would maintain a stake in the project is because we're the, we currently own the land that we would be utilizing.
Okay, and my last question then on that, on what you just said, and I don't even know if this is possible, we're way outside the box, but if we have the land, is there some caveat that we would sell the land to this person for this purpose?
That's, that's exactly, in a nutshell, what we're talking about. That is, that is, that is the reason that we're doing this. The scoping effort is to develop a, an OM to provide to the market. We would make certain properties available to you if you complete these, these, these directives on our part.
But that's where I think it goes the, the step too far. It's like, we have the property, if the different companies want to come and say, we'll purchase this property, well, the caveat is that it has to be used for housing for district employees, period. I, I don't understand why we go further into it has to be this, and it has to be that. But anyway, thank you.
And just as a reminder, I want to make sure everybody's aware, we'll provide for at least two periods of two hours to have much deeper conversation with any board members about the why, some of the limitations, why this is a problem, because I think there's some component of understanding the demand versus the supply, is there simply isn't housing for this class. And so this is not a function of it's provided, it doesn't exist. And so there's very specific action that we can take because we do own land.
But it's almost like zoning, you know, we have this piece of property, and it's only zoned for this. And that's all I'm saying. If, if we say, this is what has to go here...
But that, so, not to get into too details, but that is the, that, that is the benefit we have, because we own the property. If we say to the open market, you can, we, we're going to put this on the open market for housing in general, then we have no guarantee or ability to ensure that the property would be developed for our teachers and staff. So it is in that, 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 having that stipulation, that criteria, is what enables us to ensure that we're going to achieve the goals of this project. Now, again, today's presentation is a, is, is, is an option for us to pursue. If this is not something that the board wants to pursue, then, you know, we don't, there's no requirement for us to do so. We just believe, and Dan has educated us, about the market constraints and reasons why there is an attainable housing. That's why we have built into some presentations for you, so that you can understand the value that the district has in being able to participate in this project, and what we may be able to accomplish that the open market hasn't been able to do.
And just as a side, one of the conversations is who this is being provided to. We want to see those presentations. Ms. Vaughn, as you referenced, is who are all the other in groups that are having these limitations? And so we might not want to simply state teachers. We might have many categories that we wanted to qualify for. We will get into those different aspects as we define out the scope on this.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
So I agree with my colleagues that we are not in the business of housing, but I also agree that we are in a community where affordable housing does not exist, and we have not just teachers, but FGCU instructors, and first responders, and others who are finding incredibly difficult to find housing. And I think that if we're not part of the solution, we're part of the problem. And I think that if we can partner, and what I'm hearing you say is that there's a possibility here that we could partner with other groups in the county that are doing something. I hear organizations in this county talk about this all the time, but nobody... I hear organizations in this county talk about this all the time, but nobody ever actually does anything. So if we can be part of the solution, I'm all in. I don't have a lot, a, a good sense at all of what it is that's being proposed here today, beyond, this is something staff would like to look at, board, is this something you're, you're okay with us looking into? And, and as long as our exposure is minimized, to the greatest extent possible, I'm, and we're not landlords, you know, and I think you get that message loud and clear, we're not in the business of being landlords, but if we can be part of the solution, I, I think that, I think it would be negligent for us to not have the conversation and take the dive that you guys are suggesting.
Ms. Giavanelle, thank you.
I couldn't agree with Ms. Patrica anymore than that. I actually want to add a little bit. We actually have been, we've been speaking with someone for the last several years regarding this, and I believe that, and I've actually spoken to county commissioners and other local, and, and people are, want, I'm a realtor, so we need affordable, attainable housing, ever how that looks. I think that we are thinking outside the box when we do that, and I think that it would make us a world-class school district if we can accomplish that. And I think that it would be something that would put Lee County on the map for some, doing something so creative. So I think that we need to, we actually have a plan and a project, that I think we just need to do a feasibility study on that, and see if that's going to work for us. It doesn't commit us to anything, and it allows us to see what that actually looks like. Because I'm not sure exact, I looked at this, and I thought that the developers that were speaking to all of us about a project that they had, a proposal, that's what we were going to have, because I was told that was going to happen in January, and it was done in February, but it was, this is nothing like what we were told. So, or what I was told, I can only answer for myself. So, I'm actually a little surprised by this. I think that we just need to look at what we have on the table, and see how that works, and what that looks like for our community and our teachers. I think that the, the property was bought, we wouldn't be landlords, Ms. Vaughn, with, the property was purchased at a pretty high price. And I think at this time, and if we can put that back into our teachers, and they have value in a home that they buy, then what's wrong with that? And we, and it's a win-win for our teachers or staff, whoever takes advantage of that opportunity. Like, again, we need to really see what that looks like, and make it transparent to the community, so they can see, this is something that we're looking into, and if it's something that the community will buy in. The only way to do that is to have a feasibility study done, and have it presented to all, everyone at the board table in the community.
Ms. Giavanelle, thank you very much. One of our greatest concerns about any of the process that we go through for, for and on behalf of the school board, is the transparency that you referenced. We've had several conversations with several different developers and several different prospects. The hope with this is to be able to bring all options to the table, make it very apparent. We want to be at the table with each of the developers that have presented things. We want to have specific call to action. We want to get to an outcome that you, as a board, can say, we've taken the right process, and this is vetted, and this is good. So we're very excited to continue those conversations that have been had, and, and we absolutely intend to be very intentional with those developers that have had some of those conversations with us in the past.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan.
So how is your scoping project different than a feasibility study?
A feasibility study takes a plan, and then determines whether or not the market can absorb it and make it work. At least, that's, that's how I look at a feasibility study versus a scoping. We know that housing is a need. That's not a question. So there's not a function to determine whether or not affordable housing or teacher housing is a need. The, what, what the question that we have to the market is back to, who can bring a plan together that works best for the teachers? And so, the intent is to go out and determine which sites, and how we want to measure and determine who can provide the highest probability of providing this housing to teachers.
The other thing about a feasibility versus a scoping, is a feasibility looks at a specific project. A scoping establishes a foundation for which other, a variety of projects could be brought to the table. So this is, one is very narrowed to a specific, the other one opens the door for an array of different solutions, which we may not have ever, have not yet considered, or that potential developers or providers haven't even thought to come to us. So that's what we're, we're trying to open the door to make it up on opportunity for those who we may not have been approached by independently, to have an opportunity to do so, while still providing for those who have already been talking to us to continue those discussions.
So, back to see, see TCG's role in this, how are we paying for your work? Proposed work?
The proposal is simply $2,500 for the documents to get to an OM, and then we're paid on the value of a transfer of a deal, as if it was a sale. So just like this, the assets that we're taking to market, we are sold based on the actual performance of the transaction. So we're not motivated by anything other than the current format that we're engaged with now.
So you're talking about taking us to step seven, for $2,500?
Quite candidly, I would do it for nothing. We tried to put a number on it that made it make sense. We're fully engaged to try and make things work for the school.
I understand that. And, and what staff cost is associated, that's, that's what we pay you, what staff cost is associated with going further on this?
The only staff cost is our evaluation of the proposals and the materials that they bring to the table for us.
I mean, I have to, I have to agree with a lot of what's, what's been said at the table. I mean, essentially, this is property that the taxpayer bought. So, we have to make certain that whatever we do with this property is something the taxpayer will be comfortable with. I am concerned about, I just, I guess I share everyone's concern about how we, how we constrain the development to a specific population over the long term. I, I don't know. I, I have, I have reservations, just as everybody else does. I am not supporting Ms. Giavanelle's suggestion that we pursue a feasibility study on the one proposal that's been brought to us individually, and brought to the superintendent, because I don't think we should be paying for a feasibility study on a project that's been proposed by somebody to us, a for-profit developer. And we don't know, we have not had an opportunity to compare that project to other options before we would commit to doing the feasibility study. So I guess at this point, I would say, I'm not in favor of the feasibility study. I guess I am in support of doing a scope, just to see where we are. So that's where I am.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan, Mrs. Giavanelle, and then Ms. Skittens.
I think we just have to be a little careful, because I'll do respect, you would be paid on a commission of the sale of the property. If they're coming to us, I don't really see that we need to have a realtor in that, a developer, that they can work with our, our new attorney that we have. And, and I'm sorry, but I'm a realtor, and I understand, but it's, it's the community's money, it's, you know, and we have to think about our taxpayers. So I think we have to think about that conflict. I think it's a little bit of a conflict.
Thank you. Ms. Skittens?
That's where I had a question as well. You said the $2,500, and then you said a percentage, is that a percentage of the sale of the property? Because I, I believe we already have companies that we're dealing with, with our properties, as far as...
That's yes.
Oh, right, okay, I mean, but, so...
So it's, I'm not changing the fee structure, is what I'm saying, for this project. We're bringing a tremendous amount of work and effort. We're charging $2,500, because I was asked to put a number on it, because it's above and beyond what we normally do, in bringing a scope or an asset to the market. And so, our compensation would be the same as our current compensation.
So with the scope process and all that, that would not change your percentage of compensation?
No, it's exactly the same as current compensation.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Jordan?
I, I would just like to see the scope of it, because I do know that there is a definite need for the attainable housing regard, no matter if it's the teachers, the hospitality industry, just in general, in Lee County, we need that so badly. And I don't look at it as subsidized housing, I do look at it as attainable housing. And we have to make sure that our people can...
Just for the record, in an ideal world, if we speak about this going forward, there's still negative connotation of the term attainable, affordable, obtain, any of those things. We're using the term teacher and staff housing. Is, they're our family. From our perspective, what we're trying to provide is a basic need, and they're our teachers.
Well, and, I just, if I may, one more thing.
Okay.
I know that we do have that already, I mean, not here, but there are places that do offer that, even in the hospitality industry, they offer, and to, you know, make it easier for families to be there, and it is to keep them as, so it's a family, it's their home.
And we're happy to go through that in the workshop with you all. There's actually two states who got approved to be developers, so that they could provide housing. That's not what we're proposing.
Thank you. I think Ms. Vaughn, and Mrs. Morgan.
Okay, I'm going to go back to a couple of the comments. I agree with Ms. Patrica, that it would be wonderful for us to be part of the solution, but I'm going to emphasize the word "part" of the solution. Again, we need to pay our teachers affordable wages, so that they can afford this, as do other government entities. This is not just a Lee County schools' problem. I understand that we have a leg up, because we have this land that probably needs to be sold, since we can't use it for schools or some of our other facilities. But I honestly don't see why we need to be the ones bearing all of this on our shoulders, when it is a community problem. And I also agree with what, I can't remember who said, how do we, going forth, once this starts, a teacher quits, a teacher moves, somebody gets a new job? I mean, why not just, you know, go with, why, why did we not look at partnerships to begin with, to see how many, you know, as I said, Lee Health, Department of Children and Families are a couple that come to mind, with people that need this affordable housing?
Ms. Vaughn, my, my hope would be, is they all come to the table. Our, our goal in this is gather all parties, for-profit, nonprofit, government agencies, all the groups. We've had some of those conversations, in reference back to Ms. Giavanelle's, some of it has to become transparent. Some of this has to come to the reality of, we've had some verbal commitments. We want to bring this to an end, to determine whether it's going to work or not, and proceed forward or not. That, that's our hope, is at the end, we're presenting something that you can agree with, or you can turn down.
Yeah, and, and in the meantime, I'm somewhat disappointed that we're coming here and for a presentation, and when I ask, how many hours have been spent? Because obviously, we do have staff as well, that are concerned with this. And the underlining, the cost, and we really, that's, that's an important consideration, the number of hours spent, staff time, hours, and cost. And we don't know that.
So two, two things. First of all, we completely agree with you, this has to be done through partnerships. We're not the only ones who will be working on that. We've already identified a couple of partners, and we are hoping through this effort of the scoping, that we will identify others. And secondly, we, rather than get too, in, too far into this project, we wanted to bring it to the board, to see if there was, there was interest in us pursuing it further. And so, I think that was, that was intentional, Ms. Vaughn, for us to make sure that we were in line with where the board's direction was, before we spent too much staff time working on it.
Okay, but in that case, if we have partners from some of these agencies I just mentioned, it wouldn't be called teacher or staff. It would have to have other parameters on, you know, what, what will qualify a person to live in this housing? I mean, I see it as a very complex issue, and I see the only thing that we have, that these other groups do not have, is we have land that is expendable for these, these projects.
I can help walk through in those workshops that we have going forward, to explain some of the components as to how we can protect the future uses, and who some of those other partners. And I only reference teachers, because that's the only commitment we have today, is we're committed to teachers. We're not making a commitment that eliminates nurses, first responders, or anybody. Those obviously would be key components to assisting with expanding those that could, could benefit from it.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan, and then I'll have a couple of questions.
So, I, we, the Horizon Council, you know, had this, did a project on this in 2018, and obviously, government's not going to make it, is not going to do anything with attainable housing. They had their report, we were one of the, the seventh or eighth item on the list of things that could be done in Lee County, and nothing has happened. So it's in our lap. I guess what I would ask, is that, given the conversation at the table, that the board give direction to work on scope, but only to the extent that it involves partnerships, rather than anything individual? I mean, that's, that would be my preference.
Thank you. Okay, then, and I just want to clarify a couple of points. So, in, number two, the motivation. We're verifying supply and demand. So I think we already know in this community that there is not a supply, and there is a demand for attainable or affordable housing. We have property that, if I understand you correctly, we can't utilize for educational facilities.
We haven't, we haven't thoroughly evaluated that. That is something we are asking, as part of, if we are given the direction to pursue this scoping effort, that we would identify and evaluate the properties we have, and identify those that could be used in this purpose.
Okay, so, in my tenure on this board, I've heard this story before. And we have had presentations even going back four or five years, where people have approached us about using our land for affordable housing, for our teachers and other people in that same salary category. So, then what's different now? I mean, I, the situation has not improved, it's worsened, but basically, we have looked at this, we've had the conversation, and there has really been basically no action. But in the meantime, there has been time, energy, and money spent on looking at it. So I'm just wondering, what's different with where we are now? Legally, can we do that? Like, can we say to somebody, if you build on our property, you know, for our teachers, we set the parameters? Is that something that a school district in Florida is able to do, or...
We can, anytime you transfer property, you can create deed restrictions and covenants. So there are components that we can proceed with. I can spend a lot of time on the how we could do this in workshops, if, if okay. I think the intent with this is to get to a call to action, to make this proceed forward. That's the hope.
And just to answer your question, he's correct, in terms of transfer property, you can put on what are called restrictive covenants. You see them used a lot, like, for parks purposes, this is being deeded, but you can only utilize this portion of the parcel for parks purposes, or there's certain restrictions. So there are ways that, that as a property owner, you can put restrictions on the use of the property, yes.
And, and we as a school district, then, have the authority to provide attainable housing for our employees, and be their landlord, as well as their employer?
That's not what we're proposing.
That's not what we're proposing.
No.
Okay, fine, thank you. So I'm going to, Ms. Skittens, if you just want, want, wait one minute, and I, but I had Mrs., I had on Dr. Pruitt.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, okay. All right, you go, and then Dr. Pruitt will provide some insight. Thank you. In looking at the, the same slide that two is on, and the red dot areas are the potential areas, is that, am I correct?
That's our estimated locations for the land that we already own.
Okay, and I, I have to say it, everybody's going to sigh, but I have to say, East Zone, one of our main issues...
one of our main issues is not being able to attract and to, you know, to have the teachers and the staff that we need because they come out there, but they live somewhere else. So, I mean, as far as priority, I see the East Zone as definitely one of the high priorities. But on the other hand, we also have need for schools. So if, as we are growing expeditiously and having to build schools, if we take this property for housing, you know, in 2021, and then in 2023, we need two more schools, where are we?
So that, to Ms. Fisher's question about what has changed, one of the things that we're going to be doing, that we are doing parallel to this is, as you know, the proximity plan. And the proximity plan may change the location that we need schools because we want them to be in more diverse neighborhood-focused places. So that may change where we bought land in the past. It may change where we need land in the future. That would allow for those properties to be used for something else. So that's one thing that has changed. Secondly, to your point, Ms. Gittens, we would, you know, we know for the next five years and five years plus where we plan to build schools, we would make sure before we identify any properties that could be used for this purpose that we are not identifying properties that we have already targeted for a future school site.
Just to give you an idea, there are some sites that we have access land on that already have schools. So what and how we would use those is gonna come into consideration heavily.
Thank you. Dr. Pruitt?
I just wanted to go back to the beginning, Ms. Vaughn's request about staff hours and costs towards attainable housing. We're not gonna be able to provide that. This goes all the way back to 2016, and it involved Mark Mora, Robert Cody. So to accurately, there's no way to accurately get you that information. So I just wanted to say that while we were here, that there would be no way to go back four years and try to figure out the amount of hours that we're putting towards it.
What about currently?
Since...
Say, within the last six months, 12 months?
Then I would defer to Ms. Seaboss, she would...
I mean, it has to be budgeted somewhere, so how we...
We certainly can, we certainly can go back to the last six months, even to July 1st of this fiscal year. It has been fairly nominal. I mean, I think you will be surprised at the nominality of it. And that was on purpose, again, because we wanted to get to today. We decided that rather than continue to pursue this, we wanted to make sure that we were doing as the board was directing.
And just to finish my comment, that's what I was hoping to hear, that there wasn't a phenomenal number because, you know, if you're working on this, you're not working, you're not able to find the time to work on something else. Maybe not you personally, because you expand to do what you need to be doing. But I'm talking about just overall.
We have, we have a contract with TCG. They are the experts in this area. We are relying on their expertise to provide us the product we're looking for based on the direction we receive today.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Just whether we need to provide, yeah, direction. Do we need to reach consensus regarding direction for staff?
So then, at this time, having heard the presentation, asked the questions that we had, and look at, look at the items that are offered. Do we have consensus that we say proceed with this and come to us with the final product, which would be a list of preferences and priorities, the analysis of the land, and the development of a list of potential developers, to include government-related? Yes?
Ms. Morgan had mentioned about seeing if there's any other partners in this, and that would be, you know, in our community. And I think we definitely need to reach out to, you know, because this shouldn't be on the, we should have the blessing of the community and any other local, you know, officials and so forth, and, you know, communities.
Would the involvement of the community then come after we have the finished product that they're proposing? No. Ms. Morgan?
No, I would say we stop at four. We stop at the scope, and then we reconvene and converse at that point. I wouldn't go any further.
I would agree with that.
I agree.
Okay, all of those in agreement?
We state what we're saying yes or no to. Basically, doing the scope. That's what, I just wanted you to restate it for us.
Okay. So that will approve this project and ask them to continue up to four, the scope, and then come back to us with a report. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, so, six, one. And one can live with it. Okay, thank you. So then that's where we'll leave it, and we'll see you with that report. Thank you so much.
Chair?
Yes.
While we have a moment, I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce you to my colleague, Ashley Daniels. I know that I had a chance to introduce her to most of you, but not all of you. So Ashley's been working on, worked with the school district of Lee County for some, quite some time now, although this is the first time you guys are meeting her. But I wanted to take an opportunity for you to meet Ashley, and, you know, for me to welcome her. And, you know, she's a great, has been a great asset for our team. And, you know, hopefully you guys will enjoy working with her personally as well.
Thank you, and welcome.
Welcome.
Before we move on to the strategic plan, would you like to take the ten minute break? Or would you want to move on?
Move on.
Okay, we'll move right on then. Okay, thank you. And at this point, we will welcome Cindy McClung, Dr. Desamore, and Susan Mullay. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having us here once again. Over the past few months, we have had the pleasure of every division being able to come present to the board the goals that they have in alignment with our strategic plan for this year. So today is our final division, Business Services. And also remember that at each of these presentations, we've also had board members who have talked about the work that you've been doing that aligns with the division work that's going on. So that will take place as well today. So just one more time, wanted to thank you for this opportunity. We've really enjoyed being able to give you a better understanding of the strategic plan work that's going on in our divisions. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Desamore.
Okay, good afternoon. Thank you so much. Last one, best one. Let's go. All right. So Susan and I are proud to bring you the strategic plan update of the Business Services Division. We proudly represent our division today, and we have a few folks from our division here today. So I'd just briefly like for them to stand and be recognized. So all of our folks from Business Services, if you all would just stand. Come on now. All right. Just, I wanted them to be recognized real quick. They work hard each day, and the information that we bring you today is a major example of why we say in our division, we don't do average, we do awesome. So the major functions of the district are managed by, the major business functions, that is, of the district are managed by the Business Services Division. Our goals are to focus on asset protection, increased efficiency for cost avoidance and savings, and increasing stakeholder confidence, both our internal and our external customers, and the stewardship of our funds. Some of the major functions we handle in focusing on these goals are the inventory of over 30,000 property items, the creation of over 55,000 purchase orders a year, almost 80,000 payments to vendors, production of over 300,000 paychecks annually, the serving of over 16 million meals to our students across the district each year, and the management of a $1.6 billion budget, just to name a few. In examining our alignment with the strategic plan, long-term objectives four and five are where we live. So our presentation today will focus on specific department, division, and strategic plan goals, the data we are tracking to monitor those goals, and some strategies currently in place for process improvement.
As we go through our data, we're gonna share with you key performance measurements that are captured through Act Point KPI, an application that the district uses to compare our performance against those of other large school districts across the nation. So as you see the graphics, I wanted to point out this to you. This is kind of the legends slide. It shares with you that the green bar on all of the graphs we'll see will be the median of the data collected in Act Point KPI. The gold bar is our most recently recorded and compared data, and that was for fiscal year 18. And the purple bar is the data that was aggregated for our district in fiscal year 17. So, and the blue colors will be this, the other districts that reported on the particular metric that we'll be reporting on. First up is our Amazing Food Nutrition Services Department. This team, although overall, our Business Services Division is most closely aligned with performance and effectiveness of operations, this is the one division, that department, that directly interfaces with students on a daily basis, meeting the needs of the whole student. This department's goals are aligned with increasing breakfast participation. We have already realized access to breakfast. On the next slide, you'll see some data here regarding how we provide access to breakfast for students as well as increasing our participation for breakfast for students. As you all know, historically, schools have provided lunch for students. Eight years ago, we started with an initiative to increase that by providing breakfast to our students. And four years ago, we increased the scope to supper provision at several schools as well as summer feeding programs. So supporting the whole student, the healthy nutrition part of the student, is what we are aligned with here. And as the data reveals, we are on track with providing 100% breakfast access. And our goal for this year is to increase breakfast participation from 35% of students to 39% of students. Any questions on that? Ms. Gittens?
Where are we, and I pardon my ignorance on this, with the free meals for all of our students? Wasn't there something that was going to change with that? And how will that affect raising these numbers?
So, Community Eligibility Participation, which is CEP, which is listed on the slide, the next to the last bullet. We are at 100% free meals, including breakfast and lunch, for all students. So at this point in time, there is no initiative that any student has to take to fill out a form to receive a free meal. We've been able to leverage our data to average it across schools so that throughout the district, we have 100% free breakfast and lunch for all of our students.
Legislation changes in any way with that? Will that affect us doing that?
Legislation changes all the time. Every year, we have to reapply and reassess. So not just who gets to participate for free, but what can we serve? And what percentage of this, you know, fat and sugar and whole grains must we manage? That changes every single year, and our staff does an amazing job of staying on top of that. And I will say, providing tasty meals. These aren't the same meals that you received when you were, may have been back in school, or maybe some of you who were in the schoolhouse not too long ago. But many of you were at a recent Student Advisory Committee where our leadership team hosted a discussion with the students about their lunches. And I think you probably observed a high degree of engagement with what the students are liking, recommending how they want more of this, how they want to embrace things like recycling in the kitchen. We have a very educated student base. We have over 1,500 followers on our social media for students looking up what they can obtain for their meals for the week, planning accordingly. And so we think that our team has done a very creative job of outreach and communication with not just students, but parents as well. Ms. Patrika?
So I think what you're talking about is the, the president talked about potentially cutting the Community Eligibility Program. And I think that that was met with as much acceptance as cutting Special Olympics funding was. Meaning, he talked about it, massive public backlash, and he hasn't talked about it since. And that conversation actually took place when I, I was up, I was either in Tallahassee or Washington with FSBA, and it almost died immediately after it was presented. So I don't anticipate any issues for us in the short term going forward on this. But if there is, these people at the table are wizards with budgets. And I know you'll find a way to figure it out if we have to. And I don't anticipate it happening overnight either. If it were to be done, it would be a phased-in decrease in funding.
And I have to throw in something about complete count on the census at this point because this is one of the major federal programs that we receive money based on the count. So it's just one more impetus for everybody associated with this district to get out there and make sure we count every single man, woman, and child in Lee County so we can bring in as much as we can.
Absolutely, I couldn't agree more.
Absolutely.
So next up, the Financial Accounting and Property Record Staff consists of 22 people focused on asset protection, payments to vendors, and creation and reporting of financial information for the district. We have a district strategic plan goal specifically related to these functions that states our percentage of invoices paid on time will be greater than or equal to 90%. As the graphs you look at here show, our data related to this goal has improved over the last two years, both in days to process payments, as you see here, the purple bar in FY '17, and then the orange bar in FY '18. So you see that the number of days reduced by two. And then both in duplicate payments as well. So in the purple bar, we see that in 2017, we had about 2.5% of those, and then that decreased to less than 2% in the following year. So accuracy increases speed, and it reduces cost. Some strategies we've used to increase our speed include increasing the number of payments that are processed by credit card, which, by the way, also creates an additional funding source for the district through our rebate that we receive from our credit card program, and exploring electronic options such as EDI and invoice imaging.
Next up, we have our payroll department, everyone's favorite. Our payroll department includes a staff of 23 people who process over 600 million in annual pay, and leave as well, another area that they manage. Goals this year are increase, reducing the number of off-cycle paychecks, and that includes things like lost checks, reprints checks, extra bonuses that maybe somebody didn't apply for on time. Historically, our district has always flexed to the needs of employees and done everything that is requested out of cycle. So this is an area, as it's a strategic goal, to improve efficiency of operations. The amount of time and the opportunity for error occur when you're not following a standard process straight through, but when you're taking a lot of deviations. So we are committed to planning and coordinating and communicating with departments in advance on multiple occasions when we have special things like bonuses or summer pay or payouts at the end of the year, so that we can make sure that we streamline the process and operate efficiently by processing checks in line with our standard pay cycle. So the next graphic you'll see is an illustration of, over the past couple of years, we've started our attention on bringing the rigor to the process for following our processes. And you can see that just in the one-year period from fiscal year 17 to fiscal year 18, we significantly reduced the amount of off-cycle paychecks. And the median is lower, and this year, we have a goal to continue working towards that goal.
Excellent.
Another opportunity in payroll is the cost to process payroll compared to the number of full-time employees that we have. So this is a standard measure across the nation of what is the cost of our payroll department in terms of comparison. And you'll see the median is the green line again. And from fiscal year 17 to fiscal year 18, our costs reduce. Often, that's from optimizing systems, using more automation, and then as someone... Often, that's from optimizing systems, using more automation, and then as someone retires or departs, not backfilling that position. So that hasn't happened. And a second way that our cost improves is when we are a growing district and hiring more people, therefore, the number of full-time employees increases, which also contributes to the cost reduction of the payroll staff. Ms. Gittens?
Ms. Gittens? You mentioned something about reducing the amount, did you say, of off-cycle paychecks?
Correct. So if somebody didn't meet a deadline to get a bonus pay, or lost their check again, these are methods that, you know, if we stick with our processes and require employees to follow them and communicate what our processes are, we will have more accuracy, be more efficient, and reduce the opportunity for error.
And there is a cost involved when you have to do that out of cycle?
Yes. It means we're not processing our normal pay cycle, or we're not conducting the analysis that we would typically be doing off-cycle.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
This is just out of curiosity. I know some districts, I think my district in Texas used to do this, that they paid their employees year-round instead of the big check at the end of the school year for teachers and those on that cycle. What are the, I guess, it costs more to process year-round, is that correct? But is there, does it balance out? Is there any benefit to having the extra money in hand and invest it? Just curious.
Right. As you know, education is unique, because we get paid twice a month for 24 pay periods, but teachers are typically paid 20 paychecks, because they have eight weeks off over the summer. However, being the flexible district that we are, we offer, and this came into play a couple of years ago when we went into pay in arrears, so we now pay two weeks prior, not the immediately, immediate period. And at that time, we bargained a benefit to our staff by offering the option to either receive summer net pay and your last check, or to continue to receive checks over the summer and have your health insurance and dental insurance taken out that way. So this is an extreme burden on the payroll department, because we offer both options. It's something that we've tossed around now that we kind of went past that favor for pay in arrears. Is it something that we should bring up again? Haven't taken those conversations forward, we need to do an assessment. It does take, either one of those two options is a non-standard pay, because at the end of the year, you're paying out for what's owed for the balance of the year, and insurances have to be collected for the summertime, because we have our employees, although they might not be in the classroom year-round, they're receiving health insurance year-round. And alternatively, to allow the employees to get their pay over those eight pay periods over the summer, and pay for their benefits, and calculate a different method of pay. So our payroll department has been extraordinarily flexible and offers opportunities that are most favorable to people, and so we offer multiple options when it comes to pay.
Okay. And I didn't even realize that wasn't, it hasn't always been an option.
About three years ago, we went to pay in arrears.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I've just heard different arguments on paying year-round, and yeah, it's more to process, but money, you know, especially in a huge school district, that could be invested versus, you know, doing the way we do. I know, as a teacher, those of us who taught, our principal secretary used to say something like, "Now, remember, you're not," you know. And I guess in part, it's because people find it easier to budget when they, you know, when they receive a paycheck. But is there no, maybe, I mean, is there any benefit to keeping the money for investment, or is that just?
Well, all funds that we have that aren't actively in use, yes, we do invest them. So that would be part of our investment, but at this point, we've chosen that the benefit, whatever the benefit is to the employee is what will follow. And so the employee gets to choose how they would like that to be done of those two options. Either you get, you know, your big net at the end of the school year, or you can get paid through the summer. And then, once they select that option, then that is what we follow.
And yet, it is costing us more to do the two different systems. Okay. I just wasn't sure how that was done, and if it would be beneficial to pay everybody year-round, because that would hold money for a longer time, and if the two, the added cost of processing, if that would balance, just balance out, or if it would be cost-effective to invest money that we could hold in our hand a couple of months longer? Just curious.
Yes. And, you know, and as I said, if we did, then yes, we would be investing those funds until it was, at that point in time, it would be time to use it. But I couldn't tell you off the top what that differential would be, paying it all at once versus holding.
Did we ever do it that way here?
Yes. Before we went into, well, no, I don't, before we went to pay in arrears, everyone received the balance, well, everyone that was less than 255 days received the balance of contract. I don't know that we've ever done it any other way before then. My history here, it's always been the balance of contract at the end of their work cycle for the, you know, for the less than 255 days.
Okay.
I don't know that we've done it any differently than that.
As I said, I'm just curious, and I learned something, because I didn't know we were giving that option, which is a very nice option. But on the other hand, money in our pocket.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Gittens?
Just one quick thing on that same topic, though, with our, like with the bus drivers and that, I know they have a concern as well, because they don't have that option. Has there been any consideration of giving that option to them?
Bus drivers also have options. We completely pay them on a different cycle, for the sole purpose of distributing their pay, the number of days in each paycheck to be favorable to them. For example, at the start of the year, if we were to have our professional bus operators being paid at the same schedule as everyone else, they might have a paycheck that only has two days' worth of pay on it. So what, we work collaboratively with our bargaining units, in this case, Spock, is to identify, our target is to make sure that every paycheck has at least nine paid days in it for professional bus operators. So they have a different pay cycle, different cutoff dates, different processes, just so that we can make sure that the checks that our professional bus operators are receiving are not, you know, two days' worth of pay, 15 days' worth of pay. So again, we try to respect our employees and work on a pay cycle that works most favorably for them.
But, and what I was, thank you for that, what I was talking about, like, over the summer, is there any possibility to, you know, average it, so that they would get paid all through the summer as well?
I'll have to look into that and get back with you with an answer.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to procurement. In the past year, procurement has more than doubled in size. In the prior year, of course, you all know that they took on the construction procurement process, and in the past year, Mr. Ross and his team have taken on now responsibility for the district warehouse, as well as the mailroom. We see a lot of efficiency of operations between procurement and those departments. For example, procurement does all the bids for the warehouse, and the mailroom works closely with us for receiving bids and so forth. So this department is now responsible for not just the competitive solicitations of all, and purchasing of all goods and services throughout the entire district, in a fair and equitable process that's transparent. But we're also now working on the consolidation of warehouse resources, including the goals to evaluate the materials that we have, the items in our warehouse and distributed, you know, with the dawn of Amazon Prime, which the district is now enrolled in district-wide, and other speedy delivery services, you know. Just 10 years ago, none of that existed, and so ordering some office supplies, for example, would take you a week. Well, now, with the next-day delivery or two-day delivery, we're finding that if we can reduce some of those materials from our warehouse, we're going to realize efficiency of operations, because we don't have to spend the time to unpack them, put them on the shelf, inventory, take them and distribute them. We remove that cost and have those materials distributed directly to the schools. So procurement continues to assess the cost when we do bids, the cost to deliver to the warehouse in bulk by the truckload versus individual pencils and papers to the schools, looking at the cost for both of those, and reducing the number of inventory items. So that was a Green Belt project, and it is also one of our goals this year, to reduce by 15%, the lowest-used warehouse stocked items. A couple of our measures of comparison across the nation with our colleagues, time to process solicitations. So this is called the procurement acquisition lead time. So you can see the median time, again, in the green bar, and that the amount of time it takes to process solicitations is slightly above average and increased a little bit. And during this time, as you may know, in the past 18 months, we've processed 38 competitive solicitations just for construction. So as we're in a growing boom here, we're seeing the need, and as products are changing, we're seeing the need for new and different types of commodities, we're seeing the need to solicit for services that we've never purchased for before. You know, we just did the proximity study, we've been talking about, do we need a bid for signs, the Lamar signs? So, you know, we're having to go out and research and find what other districts are doing. And so without an increase in staff, but an increase in new types of things to purchase, we find that we don't have the shortest period of time to process solicitations, but it's still within that range. Another good metric is the cost to process purchase orders. That's a pretty easy metric to calculate, and you can see that not only are we below the median and at the shortest, at the lowest cost, but decreasing. So our streamlined processes, using automation, emailing purchase orders, making use of technology wherever we can, this demonstrates that we have a higher volume of work with fewer staff members, so we continue to do more with less.
Related to the budget department, the main responsibility there is to compile, communicate, and monitor the district's budget in support of the strategic plan. The main focus of department goals, just to give an overview, are bookkeeper support and retention, which furthers our goal of asset protection, and then support for our schools and departments, which helps to further our goal of retention. So working with each of our schools and departments to ensure an understanding of the budget and help with changing that when need be, and then being able to properly allocate our resources to provide additional resources where we need it, is the focus and main goal of the budget department. Inside of internal audit, which is a small and mighty staff, which is completely tasked with asset protection of the tens of millions our schools hold in their internal funds. Professional development for both the audit staff and for our bookkeepers is key in this effort, and that's reflected within the department goals for the internal audit staff. So we hope that we gave some good information today concerning specific initiatives within our division, and relevant data concerning the strategic plan goals that our division is directly involved with. Today, we focused on the specific goals that you'll see in the strategic plan that we gave KPI data on, and then also trying to give you a flavor of what department goals look like, even if they're not specifically addressed in the strategic plan, but the things that our departments do that, of course, support each of the specific strategic plan initiatives. Ultimately, we strive for the work that we do to increase the district's efficiency, protect its assets, and increase public confidence in order to further the district's mission for every child to reach his or her highest personal potential. So I'd now like to turn it over to Ms. Gittens, our board member partnering with us, related to the strategic plan initiatives.
Okay, thank you. And first, let me say, it's a pleasure working with your group, and we hope to accomplish a lot. The main thing I want to talk about is, when we talk about strategy, strategy and being strategic to me means making sure we have success in all areas, and especially looking at the areas of need and bringing them up to the point where everything is equitable. So in our discussions, and I'll back up one little bit, when I first came on the board and I was aware of the MOU, I believe the first one was in Astero, that, and I read it and I looked at it, and I thought, we need this in other areas of the district, and especially if we are going to be strategic and, you know, equalize our areas. So I had asked the superintendent last year about the possibility of doing an MOU in the East Zone, because we have the highest need at this particular time, and I say "we," but collectively with the whole district. And I realized that since the East Zone area is not all incorporated, and doesn't have funding of a municipality and all of that, but when I looked at the MOU, there were several items that we could do, the mentorship, the partnering, the helping out with the different schools in the area. So just recently, I think, what was it, December when we met, I believe, about next steps and how we can do that? And in that meeting, we decided that we would contact several community leaders and possible partners, and individuals that might bring to the table some help or some answers to some of the issues that we have out there. And to get them together in the same room and talk about, you know, what are some of their ideas? This is the community. So that's why we came up with the tentative name of the Lehigh Education Partnership. Now, we have not met with these individuals yet, that will happen on March 3, and it will be a working meeting to find out, is it feasible to do this? Are there enough people that are interested in doing it? What does it look like? And basically, working to see if it's something that will move forward. As I had stated to all of you in an email a week or so ago, it was not, this is not a district-wide initiative, it's a thought, it's an embryo at this time, that we're trying to see if we do water it and nurture it, will it work and will it help? One of the things that staff had even mentioned, that we can target some of the issues in the East Zone, for example, the, like, Lehigh Acres Middle School, that has 18 portables and 13 traveling teachers, and a school that was built for like 800 or 900 students. And you know that if you take the number of portables and the number of traveling teachers and multiply it out by like 22 even per class, that's how many students over that we have at that particular school. And yes, we do have a middle school that's coming up in 2021, but at this particular time, the numbers at our middle schools, if we could build two more middle schools tomorrow, one would be full and one would be almost half-full. So the need is there, and the growth continues. We had a report, I think it was the last meeting, that talked about how many new students came in just over the Christmas holiday. And I'm going to request as well, how many of those went to the different districts, so that we can understand the needs that we have.
Do you mean the different zones?
I'm sorry?
They went, which ones went to different zones? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yes. How was, you know, of those, I think there was like 1,300 altogether, and 800 were ESAL or something like that? I'm not sure.
Almost 1,400.
Yes, almost 1,400. But I'd like to, and I'm requesting that we see, where did they go? Because if, in that period of time, we increased again, then that makes the urgency even more for, you know, at least one of our districts. And I continue to say, it's not that we are not looking at other areas, but when the need is... need is, the need for teachers and staff is not there, when the need for space is not there, we really have to tackle our most urgent problems, I believe, first. That's what strategy is. How do we strategize to get everything even? So on, like I said, on March the 3rd, we will be meeting with some community leaders and talking about the issues, you know? What are your suggestions to what we have to deal with right now? We have more students than we have space. So are there any, you know, partnership ideas? We are also looking at the partnership with the YMCA will be increasing their summer program, and we were told they were also looking at the before and after-school programs. There's just a lot of unique issues in the East Zone that we have to find some way to deal with them or they just continue to grow and grow and grow, and then they get out of control. So that is one of the first things that we're tackling since we started working together. And I really appreciate the hard work that the staff is doing and providing the information to help us know how to move forward with this. So that's, and I will get back to the rest of the board members once we have that meeting on March the 3rd. And I understand that some of the board members may be interested in doing this in other areas of the district, and that's fine, and we will definitely give you feedback on how it worked out in our, in the East Zone as well. But thank you so much. Any questions about that? Yes?
I do. My only question is, and I have no pride of ownership here because Nick Mados is the one that named it the Astero Education Initiative. I'm wondering if you wouldn't consider keeping some consistency across the district so that now Benita wants an initiative and then Fort Myers wants an initiative and it all stays sort of consistent across the district as each new community creates their own initiative? That would be my only comment.
And help me understand, so you're saying call it blank education initiative?
Correct. Because it's our, like I said, it's our, I didn't come up with that name, so I don't care. I'm just thinking about consistency across the district and, you know, maybe we can create a little competition and get more communities to want to have their initiative.
Your honor.
Thank you.
No, that's not an issue at all. Like I said, right now, it is very embryonic in its stages. We haven't, you know, talked to the community. We don't know what they're willing to do, if they're willing to put their money where their mouth is, or come to schools and partner and, you know, adopt a school. We don't know what that looks like yet. The difference with your area is that there was a possibility of money and since we're unincorporated, we don't have that, so.
Well, there's a lot of Lee County that's unincorporated, but when you keep referring to we, who is we? And second, you know, because it's not the only isolated area that has that great need. Because you're still looking at, and that's part of your district too, is North Port Myers, and they have a great need there as well. So when we're talking about initiatives, we need to make sure that when we're doing this, whoever we are, that we're not omitting any of the other families and children and our kids, period.
Well, and when you, when you look at it that way, when Astero first did theirs, you know, ask that question about them, was the need there as the need, and I'm just saying it's rhetorical, but, you know, perhaps it was just something they came up with to do. It's not negating the issues anywhere else. However, when you look at the data, the data shows that the most need, not saying that there's not need in other districts, but on a whole, you know, looking at the data, the East Zone has a lot more needs and is the fastest growing and is the, you know, the most ESAL students and monolinguals and, and there's just issues out there that are not as prevalent in the rest of the district. All we're asking, and the we is myself along with the staff that I'm working with, as everyone is working with their strategic plan committee, this is the one that I'm working with and this is the initiative we came up with in order to fulfill our strategic plan process. So it's just something we're looking at. We are trying and like Ms. Patrica said, if it works there, perhaps we can do it in other areas too. But we will have data and information to show so that if, you know, in six months you decide to do that in North Port Myers, I can hand you all of the information.
I'm not doing that, but I'm saying North Port Myers is your district as well.
I understand that. I understand. And I believe I said that in the beginning, that we are one whole district, but when one section is in much more need than the other, we focus on that first.
So can I tell her how?
I think Mrs. Morgan is next and then.
Yeah, so Mrs. Morgan is going to get back to this group. So first of all, I want to compliment you guys on the KPIs and the Green Belt. You took this on a couple of years ago, and as you have absorbed other areas, your use of these practices has really made a great difference, and you're to be complimented for that, and thank you. My question is, when you talk about professional training for your staff in these different areas, are you talking about training in things like KPIs and Green Belt? Or what is it that you're talking about training your staff in?
We're really talking about training our staff in the specific areas in which they work. We want to be sure that we're staying up to date and being subject matter experts in the areas in which we represent. So when I referenced that, that's really what I was speaking of.
Okay. And then I have two questions, and I don't think they belong to you. I think they belong to Dr. Pruitt, but I am going to raise them, and it's not really part of this discussion, but I am curious. Has anybody done a Green Belt study on bookkeepers in schools and some of the office functions? And, you know, so that's one question. And the other question is on stipends for things like the website management. My concern is that we're spending money on stuff for which we have no follow-up, and I'm just wondering where to throw.
I could speak to the, well, I can speak to the issue of the Green Belt project for bookkeepers.
You are doing one.
Yeah, actually, one was actually already done, and I'm glad that Mr. Ross is here because I believe he headed up that initiative to do that Green Belt project related to bookkeepers. A couple of the findings of those, we are trying to figure out how to incorporate within potentially this next budget year. Did you want a little bit more information from Mr. Ross at this point?
No, that's fine. If you guys have taken it on, that's great.
And that's, one of the big goals for us this year was, you know, increasing bookkeeper retention. It's very, bookkeeper and school department secretary are two of our major customer groups that we're trying to focus on training for retention and then also trying to figure out, why is it, what are the reasons why they're leaving and what can we do to help alleviate that?
Thank you.
Can you say a little more about the stipends?
Yeah. So it's my understanding that schools are, staff in schools are getting stipends for website management of their school website. And it's my experience that those sites are not being maintained, a significant percentage of them, I believe, are not being maintained. How is it when we give out stipends? Are we following up to make certain that the people who receive those stipends are doing the job? And have we given any thought to changing that process? And that may be actually be communication. So anyway, I just.
Yeah, in general, for the stipend, the supplements, they all have job descriptions, and so whoever the supervisor is of the people receiving those or the people that should be addressing the accountability aspects of those job descriptions.
They are not, so where do we go from there?
I think Dr. Spiro has heard us.
Okay. Those are my comments and questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any other, Ms. Patrica, then Mrs. Vaughn.
I just want to say that the inclusion of pictures of staff and the invitation of staff into the room is really very huge for me. I really feel like we, as a board, just really get a better feel for the people who work incredibly hard every single day, and for me to be able to put faces with tasks was really helpful for me. And I think the more exposure we get to your staff, the more we understand what you guys do and the importance of what you do, and thank you for being here and putting up with us for a board meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Really meant a lot.
And Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I wanted to, just wanted to say that although there's just two of us that are elected at large, and obviously everybody else that has their particular district, you want to embrace your district in particular, all of us represent the whole district. And when there's one piece of the district, even though we would want to advocate for our particular district, as somebody mentioned, it's the data that draws where the need is. It's not about equality, it's about equity in this case. I wanted to underscore a couple of things that Mrs. Gittens said, and one is, I was nodding when she said about if we built two schools today, we could do middle schools, we could fill them. Because I was just out at Varsity Lakes Middle School, which I was told by Mr. Maderas or Dr. Maderas, that it was built for about 950 students, and they currently have 1,350 students. And I walked with him through the 10 portables that are there, and they are using literally every inch of their building. And so that's one thing. The other thing is, I'm linking us on to the Head Start Policy Council, and we talked at the last meeting, just a few days ago, we were talking about our district initiative to increase kindergarten readiness. And part of that, of course, is our Head Start, our early Head Start programs. And we were talking about partnerships and, you know, of course, they have to rise to a certain level. You can't just go into a particular daycare center and say, okay, you want to be a partner, fine. They have to have certain qualifications with their teachers and a lot of different things. So I asked about the need in the East Zone, and there is a long, long, particularly long waiting list in the East Zone. And I said, so why? Okay. And one of the reasons that I was given, and it makes sense, is that there's such a demand for daycare there and that a lot of the daycare centers can start their own VPK and they can do it, they're using the curriculum, et cetera, but there's no real motivation for them to lower the number, you know, the ratio numbers that they would have to do for Head Start and some of the other very, very specific stringent requirements if you're going to be a partner in Head Start. And so to me, that's another huge, huge area where there's so many of the kids there that are eligible for Head Start, early Head Start and Head Start, but their parents can't get them to the nearest, you know, like Michigan Avenue, that area, or whatever would be the closest area. And that's really undermining our whole initiative because those kids that can't get into a Head Start program and really need it, they're going to be our kindergartners and they're going to come in with less ability than they would have had if we had those partners in Lehigh Acres. So that's just a good example of how the data and need really affect us as a whole district. Just wanted to put that out there.
Great points. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Gittens?
Just my last comment is that, you know, I am totally, I have a question about internal audit, but I can ask you that offline.
Okay.
And the fact that we do represent all of the district, but many of you have visited and visit the schools out in the East Zone, and I'm sure you're keenly aware by what you see, the need that's out there that is not necessarily in other parts of the district. I've talked to principals in other areas like in the South and the West, and some schools have no portables at all and no traveling teachers. So it's kind of, you know, the comparison. And again, I just want to say thank you for working, our working relationship.
We'd like to, sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
I just was going to wrap up with a couple of quick little reminders. First, to thank you so much for the support that the board has provided in the work that we do, and particularly your embracing these Lean Six Sigma courses and the work that we've done. We do have a new round of courses coming up this spring. We have three courses that make up an advanced yellow belt, consist of yellow belt, DMAIC, which is define, measure, analyze, improve, and control, and then project management. And once personnel have completed those three courses, they're eligible to take part in a Green Belt project. So we're really excited to have those coming around again. And then we do have another big event coming up on March 31st, which I know you have a hold on your calendar, and you might not know much about it, so I'll give you just a real brief analysis. We're bringing this event to our community and business leaders in order to engage them in the work of the strategic plan so that they understand a little bit more about what we're really doing and personalize it for them. So it's different from the state of the schools address in that we want to engage the audience. They'll be broken down into four different sessions where they can rotate through the sessions, and they're going to hear personal stories about some of the work that's going on in the district. And they will also have a district person paired with a community leader who will be talking about how that work has impacted them in the community. So we're really excited about that. It's seven o'clock till noon on Tuesday, March 31st at Broadway Palm. Want to thank Will Prather for offering Broadway Palm for that. So I look forward to seeing you at that event as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any other comments? I just want to say thank you for the work that you've done to increase efficiency and cut costs. And when I was at the foundation meeting the other day, we had some very favorable comments from our business community members. And as we continue to grow, I see that we are increasing our relationships with the business community. And so the Astero MOU and the East Zone Lehigh MOU is important, and I like that idea, Mrs. Patrica, about calling it an education initiative. And I think that as we continue to work as partners with the strategic plan, which is a great opportunity for us, that we can continue to grow those relationships in our own communities. And it takes a village, so I appreciate all the work that our staff does. It's paying off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So. Do we have any comments for Good of the Order?
I believe the Good of the Order, we were going to talk about the attorney, was that, ma'am?
Yes. And Ms. Morgan, did you?
Actually, I just, I forgot to ask a question, and I wanted, back on the property. Would you, do you know, well, let's see, would you look at the contract with TCG? I would like to know what, if we were to transfer property to an entity as opposed to sell it, what would the impact be on the, you know, are we allowed under the TCG contract to do that?
We had, in the meeting I was in, they briefly spoke of that, that it would be based on the appraised value at the time that the transfer would take place.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it. Sorry.
Then, conversation for Good of the Order, Ms. Gittens?
At our interviews, I think it was on Friday, we discussed bringing it up for Good of the Order, and correct me if I'm wrong, if it's not this venue, is that what we agreed upon, and that we would... And that we would discuss moving forward what it is that we, as a board, really want to do. What was initially stated was looking at the possibility of an individual attorney versus a firm such as Y.Schroeder. And it was also brought up that in order to be able to look at that clearly, to have our current attorney to be able to at least give some updates on what they have done, and give them an opportunity as well to be asked any questions in order to make the right decisions.
And he said it's an email. Is that fact?
Right. And so everyone has received the communications, including the communication from Mr. Quick? Okay. Any other comments or?
Well, I'd like to see if Mr. Quick has any other statements that he would like to add. I'd like to hear from him.
Yeah, I mean, we enjoy doing the work for the school district, and we hope to stay here. It's, the work is significant. It's a significant amount of work. And, you know, when I went through, when the board had asked us to submit a proposal based upon the work that we do, and I looked back at, I guess, the breakdown in the proposals that, from the November proposal that staff had presented, I guess, that initially got this ball rolling, as well as to the job description that was sent out for potential candidates. And the amount of work, or the type of work that we do, does not necessarily match up with those breakdowns. Some examples include, you know, real estate issues that we have been asked to handle, to review, to analyze, land use and zoning matters. I mean, we're working, you know, now with, you know, with staff on a number of issues as to, you know, property that, you know, what can the district do with certain property? Are they entitled to develop a school on it? It's in unincorporated areas. So these are what I would consider specialized areas that we offer and are part of the retainer that, generally speaking, you're, you know, an individual usually would not be able to handle. And I think that there is a consideration for a number of those things that would, should be taken into account, or I would urge the board to take into account that there would be outside council costs that would come along with those, as well as a number of issues with, related to intellectual property matters for the district. There have been alleged copyright infringements that have come in, that we have been, that we have dealt with, and frankly, the board, I'm not sure is even aware of that, because we've dealt with it and have been able to move on, and it's not come to the issue where the, where the board has needed to be aware of it. Ethics matters that I know that, you know, we've dealt with on a number of cases. And a lot of the, really a large portion of our work is drafting of contracts. And I know that under the breakdown, that does not fall, or at least the proposed breakdown, that does not fall within the board attorney jurisdiction, neither does land use or real estate or anything like that. But the reality is, is that has been what we have been tasked with doing. And that is a, the contract drafting has been a significant amount of the work that we do. In fact, I would say, really, the smallest portion of the work that we do is really the work that you and the public see. The most, most of our work is done working with staff and is outside of, you know, the public meeting, and it's what gets brought to you. So our proposal is the same as what we're working under now, which is $37,500 per month, which we think is reflective of the amount of work and the amount of time that we put in, working with staff and helping staff to get to places that we think they wouldn't be otherwise. I think some examples of that are, you know, I guess, a couple months ago, there was a presentation with regard to the, an audit that was done, and there was $2.7 million that was brought back to the, to the district. We work with staff, with Dr. Decimore, and I think it's fair to say that without that group, and I include us in that group, I include Dr. Decimore and her team in that group, without that group, I don't think that that $2.7 million would be, have come back to the district. So I would like for you guys to not just look at us as a cost. I think that we have actually been revenue positive to the district, when you factor in things like, you know, the $2.7 million that has been brought back into the district, as well as frankly, strengthening up a lot of your contracts, because a lot of those contracts, there were provisions that were missing. I mean, even just some, some regular provisions, like, you know, you have to comply with the public records laws. So if you have a contractor and that provision's not in their contract, they're not, may not be aware of it, but, you know, you guys are, would be on the hook if your contractor does not have those public records. And we have been insistent upon those being part of the contracts. It's frankly, it's required under the statute anyway. But, you know, those are things, you know, just kind of, some of those are just even basic things coming in. There are, you know, those are, I guess those are a number of things that we would like for you to consider, of us not really looking at us only as a cost. Obviously, there is a cost to the work that we do, but there's a lot of revenue that I think we do assist when working with staff. I won't take, I don't think we can take all credit for it. I think you guys have a good staff, and I think that we helped to support them to generate funds coming back into the district as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Quick. Ms. Vaughn?
I have a question, I guess, for Dr. Pruitt. Since we initiated that contract with Y.Schroeder, I don't know, X number of months ago, we have added a couple staff attorneys. What I'm asking is, in the role, in their roles, the new people coming onboard, will they be taking up anything that Y.Schroeder has dealt with, or?
My understanding is that that's kind of still to be determined, but that the expectation would be that some of the contract work, I think, or the contracts that are being reviewed and written, would be done by those staff attorneys in their respective areas. For example, the one that would be working with operations would be reviewing and refining those contracts. But in terms of how much time that would be, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious what difference that makes. Not that I'm trying to, well, maybe I'm a little trying to cheap out on...
I understand your question.
On what you're doing.
I guess I...
No, but I'm just saying, I'm wondering if, because we've, seriously, if because we've added a couple new people, if a few of the things we've asked our board attorneys to do will now not necessarily be on the table for them, because we have added more in the legal department.
I would say that at least since that proposal in November, and since the hiring of the attorneys, our work has actually expanded.
Oh, okay.
The amount of work we've done, if that were to change into the future, I mean, certainly that's something we could discuss, but that was part of our consideration, that we've actually seen the amount of work we're doing, and the variety of work we're doing has actually expanded, even beyond what we had anticipated when we put forth this original proposal.
Well, let me ask you, have you had discussions with Mr. Williams about, you know, with the new people onboard now on that side? Have you had discussions about whether anything has changed for Y.Schroeder versus?
Not in any great detail. I mean, to this point, we get the contracts and get sent to us for analysis and review, and we do the work. I mean, if, I am happy to discuss with him if his, if his staff attorneys are going to be doing that in place. We haven't seen it. You know, certainly with the land use and real estate, I know that the, in bond work, I know that the department has not hired anybody with that area of expertise, so I would not anticipate that that would, would go on the staff attorney's side. But if they intend to take over some of the contracts and do, in fact, do that, you know, then that's, you know, we could maybe have a further discussion.
I just, just for general knowledge on my part, and maybe some of the other board members feel the same way, I'd be interested in seeing what, what the new additions to our new legal department, what exactly they're doing, and what, and I guess Mr. Williams is not here to answer that, but do you know, Dr. Pruitt, what exactly, with the new job descriptions, they might be taking over?
Well, I know he developed the current job descriptions based on what he thought the needs would be. I think part of the thought behind the legal department is that, aside from Y.Schroeder, but those other outside counsel that we utilize, that those expenses would be reduced as a result of that. Some of the expansion that he is talking about, I think, is a result of, because of trying to figure it out, that some of the work has shifted over to Y.Schroeder. But I know that, you know, Mr. Williams is emphatic that, you know, that reining those costs in of, and again, I'm not talking about Y.Schroeder, I'm talking about the other attorneys.
Right, the others that we've been...
Right, that those expenses would be reduced as a result of this legal department. And I think it's kind of hard to really say, because, you know, the second staff attorney isn't onboard yet, and the first staff attorney is really kind of learning the ropes and kind of figuring it out. And I know he has, Mr. Williams has a vision of cross-training of all the different staff. But I think it would be difficult, you know, for Y.Schroeder to really know what that means for them at this point.
Well, it probably behooves all of us here on the board to know exactly what's going to be happening, some specifics. This is aside from our discussion that we're having about whether to have the firm or one. I think it would be helpful for us to know exactly what kinds of services will be eliminated from the outside, since I know Y.Schroeder did supply some of those in the past.
And that was why I had looked at the staff breakdown as well from the November proposal, to try to figure that out. And there were a number of them that were not listed under board attorney, but are still being, the board attorney is still being utilized, because I wanted to see what the proposal was and what the reality was. And it doesn't, at least as of this moment, it doesn't, it hasn't matched up to what the proposal was, that, so whether the board decides they want to do that, that hasn't been with the work.
That would be good, whether we have groups, or whether we have an individual, what exactly the board attorney is going to be responsible for, given the new additions to the legal.
Yeah, so there's no surprises for anyone, us, you guys included?
Exactly. I don't like surprises, except when I win the lottery. Hasn't happened.
Thank you, Mrs. Vaughn. Ms. Patrica?
So the backup material from our November 14th workshop has exactly that information. I'm looking at it right now.
It does?
I took it, I brought it up in anticipation of having this discussion today, and it's pretty clearly broken out where the legal department is going, and what the board attorney responsibilities would be, and what the cost of all of them are. I believe that Ms. Giovinelli had asked for that information in our last workshop, and I just, I just assumed we would all go out and find it in anticipation of today's meeting.
That's why I didn't, so I appreciate what you said, November 14th?
November 14th, I think it's Workshop A, not Workshop B. It might be Workshop, I can't remember which one it is, but.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, I think that what I've heard specifically from Ms. Gittens with regard to her concerns are, the number one question in front of us, and Dr. Pruitt, perhaps you could correct me if I'm wrong, the number one question in front of us for this discussion today is, do we have a viable candidate? Right? Isn't that the number one question?
No.
Okay, Ms. Gittens, what would you consider to be the number one question in front of us today?
The number one question in front of us today, in my opinion, is what model we are going to, to look at. We have potentially, like, three different ways to go. We can go A, status quo, B, individual, but with the individual, with the realization that whomever that is, there is going to have to be the caveat that we will have outside attorney assistance. They cannot do it all as one individual person.
That's here on that November 14th.
Okay. And the third, can I please finish my statement first? I have one more piece of it. The third part is possibly a hybrid, where we do have the internal person and, for example, Y.Schroeder, because they're already here, they already know our processes. And we work out that when, if we have that individual, that individual would work with them, as opposed to us, going through all of, trying to find who else that individual's going to work for. They are already here, they already understand what we do, they've already contributed. So to me, there's three possibilities, status quo, the individual, or a hybrid where we have Y.Schroeder and an individual. But we haven't decided a model yet. So when we decide what kind of a model, then I think we decide who's going to fit into that model. Because I've said before, in our discussion, the discussion was not who are we going to hire as an individual, but are there viable individuals that could fit that position?
That's what I just said. And I'm wondering, how do we get to a decision about, between what you consider to be three options, if we don't know whether there is a viable candidate? Like, how do you choose an individual attorney? How do you say, we're going to go the individual attorney model, but oh, by the way, the board can't agree that there is a viable candidate right now? That's where, that's why I'm wondering whether we, as a board, can decide that that's the first question in front of us, before we move on with the second part of the conversation?
But then it's also like saying to those individuals, we're going to choose one of you, but we don't know what we're going to do with you yet, because we don't know which model we're going to choose. So I mean, if it were me interviewing for a position, it's very iffy to say, okay, you put your life on hold and wait for us to decide, we may want you, we may not want you, depending on which model we choose. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
Madam Chair, we're going back and forth. Would you please ask each board member where they stand on this, how they would like to tackle this question? And my preference would be, I believe that we need to go with the individual board model, individual board member model. And I believe that, and I want to do that, because I believe we have a viable candidate.
Okay. And I just want to comment that when we left on Friday, it was also my understanding that what we were going to ask was, do we have a viable candidate? But we were also going to make a decision as a board as to which model we felt would be the best. So based on some of the information that I've heard here today from Mr. Quick, and some of the things I've reviewed, including Mr. Williams' chart from November, I don't think that we have a clear picture of exactly what the responsibilities are going to be, because although we got that list in November, and people are still being hired in the staff attorney's team, and the work is falling to the board attorneys that we have contracted, and money has been received back with their assistance and expertise, I mean, I think that we have, maybe we need to ask two questions. A, is there a viable candidate? And then B, which model do you think we need, if in fact, we need to choose one of those models? And I had sent back in my response to Dr. Pruitt, I, you know, I said that there could be a possibility that we would need both, because an individual board attorney is not going to have the expertise needed for all of the issues that will come before them. And there will still be a need for contracting out. So then, at that point, do we decide that we're going to contract out with some of the people we've contracted out with before, or are we going to find new people, or are we going to stick with a known entity? So that's kind of where my mind was going after I reviewed all the information extensively. So, Mrs. Morgan?
My observation would be, I wouldn't want to tie the hands of a board attorney to a particular firm. When Keith Martin was here, if he had to rely on an outside attorney, he made a decision about who was the best person to handle, to represent the district. And I don't think that we should be dictating to a potential hire who it is that they would be obligated to work with in the event they had the contract work out. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, and actually, did we not...
Okay, and actually, did we not, I think, I pointed out in the job description, an essential, essential job function, to go with what Ms. Morgan said, is recommend outside counsel for school board's approval.
Right.
So, what I would like to do at this point is, I would like to have our discussion of the candidates, and then from there, we can decide, is in fact, somebody a viable candidate? And then we can, because we really have to decide, do we have a viable candidate before we get to the other point?
Okay, so Mrs. Morgan has indicated that she goes with individual attorney, and she feels we have a viable candidate. And your input is...
I would go with an individual if we determine it, you know, obviously, if we have a viable.
Do you believe that that's the case at this point?
I do.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gittens.
I go with my suggestion of a hybrid, which would mean an in-house person with a stated outside. The verbiage in the, in the job description says recommend, not have the opportunity as our employee to tell the board who they're going to use or not going to use. It says recommend, and to me, the definition of that means recommend to the board whom they would like to use.
Okay.
It's, it would be our decision. So, I would think a in-house along with, with Wyserota.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
I do believe that we have a viable candidate, and I also do not believe that we should dictate to them, because I don't believe that we have ever done that, the board has dictated to the board attorney.
But your vote is for the individual model. Thank you. Ms. Patrica? Okay. Okay. Ms. Giavennelli?
I do believe we have a viable candidate. I am concerned over the job description and delegation, and how that's going to be divvied out. I'm very concerned over that, and how that's, a lot of things are falling back onto a larger firm. So, I would not be opposed to using Wyserota, because they're very familiar with a lot of our daily work right now.
Ms. Fisher, can I make one more comment? Okay, yes.
Okay, I would like to clarify that I still remain that we should have an outside firm for many reasons that I've already said. And yet, the reason that I made the statement I did is because I know the vote is going to go for an individual anyway, and I want it on record, though, that if we do that, I'd like to see the hybrid.
And so, historically, we have had a consistent firms that have worked for us in the future, based on the choice of the, the board attorney and the former staff attorney. So, okay, yes.
What do you say?
So, I, I, I'll just read what I wrote. "I feel comfortable that an in-house attorney would have its advantages. However, there still is a need for expertise in different areas, which evidently requires contracting out." And then I said, "Since we do have an agreement with, and have been served by Wyserota, I would like for us to solicit updated proposal from them with regard to the services available, and in consideration of Mr. Williams' chart of responsibilities to be handled by the staff attorney team," which I think needs to be updated, and I'm sorry that he's not here today, so probably when, when he is in the room, we could get more information.
I agree. I just want to say, I read that part of the job description perhaps slightly differently than you do, given my experience with the board attorney here. I read, recommend outside counsel for the school board's approval to be things like the Jewel lawsuit, or the 7069 lawsuit, you know, things where we're going to be the plaintiff, whereas the, and then it goes on to talk about the coordination of outside counsel for other matters, and I believe that there's a list of matters in the, so given, given the function of the office up to this point, that's how I read, and I believe we actually wrote that job description. I was a member of the board when we wrote that job description, and that was certainly what, what I intended for it to mean at the time. So, there just, it could just simply be a, I just wanted to say not to argue and not to cause any problems, I just want to let you know that that's my reading of that piece of the job description.
And I would concur, because I don't, I think the only thing that Keith contracted out while we were here was the 70, while he was here, was the 7069 and the Jewel. Now that I think about it, I don't think there's anything else. Anyway.
Okay, but I recall that he gave us at least semi-annual updates on contracted services that, that he had recommended or requested, or contracted with other attorneys to help with different cases.
But we didn't approve those individually.
We did not. Okay.
That's what I mean.
So, then I'm still looking for a little bit more information, but on the vote at this point is of four individual and three individual with hybrid.
Ms. Fisher, can I just make the statement too? I am listening to the interviews with the candidates. Yes, there could possibly be a viable candidate. However, none of the even possibilities of the viable candidates have done the job that we keep referring to Mr. Martin, and none of them, in my opinion, are of that caliber to make all of those decisions that he made, and will need, you know, assistance, because we don't, it's not like we have someone coming in that has sat in that chair and has done those things and made those decisions. So, you know, we're talking apples and oranges.
Right, and I think what we wanted to determine was, what was the vote regarding individual or otherwise? And so, I think we have that now, and then I'll take suggestions for what we do next.
Okay, so, before we have that discussion, we were going to be getting the sheets?
They're out there.
Oh, where are they?
They're on email.
They're there?
That was sent today.
Oh, okay.
So, I think we need to have a chance to look at.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to see that, because I was busy. What...
Can we table that?
Can we take a break, and so we can look at it in our offices? I hadn't looked, hadn't had a chance to even read.
Okay.
Possibly, can we continue this tomorrow? We have like a two-hour break tomorrow after we've finished all the meetings, and I know that there's time-sensitive things for several of us today at 4:00.
Okay. So, then, because, because we may have questions for the staff attorney, for our chief legal counsel, and he is not here today, he's at a conference, I will entertain the possibility with the agreement of the majority of the board to continue the conversation tomorrow.
Do we need to make a motion, or something?
Well, I don't think we need to make a...
You can't make a motion, though, because it's a workshop, but you can.
Okay, and what time did we get, Eman?
This morning, 10:00. Around there.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing, because I know I was involved with something else earlier today, and to get that at 10:00 in the morning, I certainly haven't had a chance to look over the, will we be seeing the comments and everything?
Yes, it's all right.
It's on there at 10:14, because it was asked by...
No, I'm just saying, because I haven't looked at it, but what I'm saying is, not having seen it, so then all in favor of postponing or tabling this until tomorrow, please signify by thumbs up. And we have five up, one can live with it and one no. Okay, so, and I guess the majority...
But it's difficult to, when we just received it.
And what can we do to help, get you to, you can live with it, Ms. Patrica?
I just think we should come to the table prepared.
I agree.
Well, we've taken the vote.
Well, excuse me, come prepared, it comes at 10:00.
Okay. We have our vote, and we continue this tomorrow, and if there are any other comments or good of the order, please state them now.
Just one, or two from the attorney, I just wanted to advise you just of two things. One, actually, Ms. Patrica had brought it up with regard to the Jewel lawsuit. I wanted to let you guys know that I'm, to get you thinking, so that tomorrow you can give us some guidance and direction as to whether that is something you did want to pursue. I know that you had gotten some, my email back about a month ago with regard to what the possibilities of other attorneys. So, I just wanted to see if there was, you don't have to give it today, you can give it to us tomorrow, or whenever the board is comfortable, as to guidance if the board does want to pursue a lot, the Jewel litigation as a plaintiff. If so, we can bring it back to the board as an action item with an actual retainer agreement for, for the law firm. But I just wanted to make sure we get guidance from the board, that that is, in fact, something you want to do. The other item has to do with, I'm sure a lot of you saw on the news on, I guess it was Thursday, the entity Goodwheels that ceased operations. They have a bus fuel agreement with the board, and I have asked the chair to add it as a good cause item for tomorrow night, because in there, there is a termination provision, and I will be asking the board, and recommending to the board, obviously, they have ceased operations, recommending to the board to terminate it immediately under that provision, and then also asking the board to give the superintendent authority to, I understand, there is money that's owed to the district, so that the superintendent can use whatever means he deems necessary and appropriate to recoup that money, if possible. But I just wanted to give you all an update on that, on those two things, so you can think about that overnight, and you can give guidance to us tomorrow, guidance on one, and hopefully approval on another. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quick. Okay, we'll be prepared for that for tomorrow. Ms. Gittens?
I had a question about one of the consent items, an E-rate, but can I request that Ms. Decimore or someone from her staff contact me regarding that question on E-rate? Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Pruitt, any comments?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other business to come before this body, this workshop is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.